Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 25th, 2025 City Council Work Session. The City Manager will walk us through the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Today during our work session, we have, if you recall, and I'll go into it a bit more in a second, but this afternoon Donna Witt, our Chief Financial Officer is going to walk you through our capital improvement plan. She'll define what that is, what it looks like and what it means. And like I said, I'll take more time to explain a little bit more about it. We also have quite a few business item briefings in the council. Remember that those are items that at some point will require a vote and/or some kind of interaction with each other about. And so our opportunity as staff is to make sure that you're informed about it. Make sure that the questions that you have about that particular item, you can pose them and to the degree that we can answer them, we will. And if we don't have the answers, then we'll come back to you about it. There's no current closed session, so Mayor, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and introduce Ms. Witt, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So many of you, and particularly I'm looking at Vice Mayor Deemer and also Councilmember Timmer, may ask yourselves, why am I in the second floor room? Well, part of this is when I started here in this wonderful position as City Manager, the greatest city in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Lynchburg, Virginia, well, let's go the whole East Coast, let's go the world, Mr. Feraldi, I would say that. One of the opportunities that we worked together about was when we get into this process, which will be over the next several weeks, the budget process, one of the things or the opportunities that we have with a room like this is to sit together, roll up our sleeves and kind of work, and not the least of which, hey, Dr. Wilder, good to see you, not the least of which Donna is going to start giving you big books like these that are going to help, not simply with the steps that you'll take to get to the second floor, but also your triceps as you carry these things around with you. That was a bit of humor, but also still talks about the health here. So we're here on the second floor because what we have found, at least in my tenure, that there's a benefit to sitting around a table and looking at each other and staff being able to respond to questions quickly or adeptly. And so I have some prepared remarks, some things to kind of help engage you about what this looks like and how it works. The annual budget process never truly stops and we all know that. The moment we finalize one budget and the fiscal year begins, we immediately begin laying the groundwork for the next. And Donna and her team can tell you that expressly and that we know that the fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30, and no sooner have we adopted a budget, we move into the next because that's what really kind of helps a city to propel forward. Back in October, just as a reminder, we provided our department heads with budget instructions with requests for maintaining a flat approach from fiscal year 25 while accounting for necessary inflationary and contractual increases. As we focus on operating expenses, we also have a parallel conversation about the capital improvement plan, how we invest in the city's future infrastructure and long-term needs. That's what we're going to do today. Our CIP is built with careful consideration of available resources, funding strategies, and the pressing needs of our community. We prioritize projects in alignment with City Council's goals, ensuring that every dollar we invest strengthens the foundation of our city and supports our future growth. Over the past several months, as a reminder, we've been working through this process, providing broad context at the budget retreat that we attended in January, engaging in 101s in recent weeks about conversations about the operating and also the capital improvement plan and discussing those needs there. That's why we're here on the second floor today. That's what I just talked to you about, to create an environment that encourages open discussion where we can roll up our sleeves and tackle this budget together over the next several weeks. In your work session on March 11th, we will focus upon the CIP and its specific projects. But today, what I ask is that you listen, absorb the information and start thinking about the questions that will help decide or help guide your decision making here in Lynchburg. Lynchburg is experiencing good growth and this plan addresses projects and maintenance that are critical and necessary at this moment in our city's history. Please take note of any questions, just as we do for City Council meetings. We want to capture and address them thoughtfully. And after Donna's presentation, you'll also hear again from our data analytics, Sean, team on a really cool, in Holly, really cool new dashboard, really, really cool dashboard. Vice Mayor Deemer, I know that you and the IT thing, this is going to knock your socks off. You've got socks on that will be knocked off. City staff and the public to explore and drill into the details of the capital improvement plan. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, thank you for letting me take that opportunity to engage you about where we are, where we're headed and what today is about. And Mr. Mayor, if you're okay, I will turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Donna Witt.
Please do.
Thank you. Donna?
Thank you. And just want to do a brief introduction of myself, kind of taking Ben Copeland's lead about why I'm doing what I'm doing. I came to Lynchburg in the fall of 1980 as a transfer student to Lynchburg or to Liberty Baptist College from Kentucky. You can tell I bleed blue, winter mentions it often. And after graduating, I worked at Old Time Gospel Hour and I did the books for Old Time Gospel Hour, Thomas Road Baptist Church and LCA. And then every time Jerry Falwell either started a company or bought a company, I did the books. And so wrong about 1991, we merged our accounting office with Liberty University and I became the Director of Accounting at that point and started doing the books for all of those plus Liberty University. And then towards 1996-ish, I became the Budget Director. So if you're an accountant, I went to the dark side and I found out I really liked the budget side. And so I worked under the President, John Borg, at the time and learned all my experience with how to do a budget for a university. And about 1999, of course, things were not the best at Liberty University at that time. And about 1999, I applied for a job and got it here at the city and started as the Billings and Collections Administrator. So in that role, you know, I learned all the ins and outs of the cash and the taxes and the billings and all of that. But Bonnie Severcek was the Deputy City Manager at the time and she knew my background in budgeting and she asked me if I would help with the 2002 budget. I'm like, sure. So she asked, she gave me a list of departments and I met with those department directors and our sole purpose was to cut budgets. So I did that role and as a reward, I received a brand-new axe at a meeting to, as my reward for cutting budgets. So and from there in 2002, we were working on the 2003 budget. Our Budget Director here, Martha Wallace, was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and she wanted to do as much as she possibly could, so Bonnie asked me to come alongside of her and kind of usher that budget through for what she couldn't take care of, make sure the document got done, those type of things. So I really learned a lot from Martha Wallace and unfortunately she passed. And at that point, anytime the City Manager and the Deputy City Manager asked you to go to lunch, you got more work. So Kim and Bonnie, Kim Payne at the time, asked me to go to lunch. I ended up Assistant Director of Finance and in the role of Budget, Billings and Collections and Procurement. So that's how I ended up there. And then Mike Hill decided to retire in 2006 and Kim and Bonnie asked me to go to lunch again and I ended up the Director of Finance. So that's kind of how, so I've been here a long time and done many budgets. And what's really cool about working with the city and all and being in my role and all the work that I get to do with other departments is we've gotten to do some pretty cool stuff here and we've really done impactful capital projects, whether it's Heritage High School or Sandusky Middle School, the Police Department, all the revamping of bridges, the Lakeside Drive projects, we've really done some very impactful things here. And although Winter doesn't like me to talk about it, I have ushered a lot of pigs through snakes. Now, sometimes those pigs were guinea pigs, they weren't as big, but they were pigs nonetheless. So we, it's, it's part of my job to make sure that we can pay for all these projects that we need to get done. And so that's what we're really looking at today is what's proposed for the fiscal year 26 through 30 capital improvement program. So we're going to kind of walk through this and we're going to look at the process, how we fund projects, what the funding types look like, and then we'll actually walk through the proposed projects. And some of this will be a review for you all, but we do want to mention, you know, remember that people are watching online and help them to understand how this process kind of works. So when we look at the actual program, as Winter mentioned, budgets kind of year-round. We're always looking and doing something regarding budget. So in late summer to early fall, we do send out instructions to our departments and ask for projects to be submitted for consideration. Now, they don't just, this isn't a surprise to them and they're not just trying to come up with projects at that time. These projects that they submit, they're based on bridge maintenance plans, building maintenance plans, transportation studies, park plans, we've got the downtown 2040 Master Plan now. So really, these are already thought out and what's coming in next. So that's what we're looking at. We're also, we've got a couple of reserves we look at and projects to grow our tax base. We work very closely with Marjette Upsher in thinking about how we not only serve our businesses that are here and help them grow, but also have opportunities to grow that tax base and make it a place, then provide space where people can move into and start a new business. And then we also need to remember, we've got, we own the school buildings, so we've got to be able to look at projects to renovate, maintain and meet the needs of our city schools. So part of what budget does is we determine what we can afford. So you've heard me talk many times about our unassigned fund balance. And so we go through that calculation and figure out how much we can use out of that unassigned fund balance for one-time funds. And in my history here, generally those have been used for maintenance projects. We call those pay-as-you-go projects. And then for our larger projects, we look at our debt service capacity. Now, we've talked some about our financial policies. One of those helps us in our debt management, helps us look at what we can afford so we don't get out over our skis. We also look at interest rates, our AA+ credit rating is so important as a part of that. We work with our financial advisors, they have important company and they help us determine, like if we pick these projects, what's the impact going to be on our debt service? So that's part of our processes too. So and then we, when it comes down to how we whittle these down and what we look at, we make sure that we're not spending more than what we have available. So that's part of it. But I work with Lee Newland, Clay Simmons, Gaynell Hart, Wyatt Woody, I work with them and saying, okay, if I can't afford all of this, how do we prioritize this? What's the most important? And so that's some of the work that we go through once we get these submissions. And then we talked a little bit about our funding, so let me just kind of why we do what we do. So pay-go, we really want to use as much cash as possible. Same way when you do maintenance on your car and your house, you don't want to put that on a credit card, you want to be able to pay cash for that. And so that helps us lower our borrowings. But the things that we pay cash for are projects with a life of less than 20 years because typically we do a bond funding for 20 years. These are maintenance projects, minor renovations, anything with a lower cost. We cash fund our reserves. As much of our economic development projects, sometimes they may or may not qualify for bond funding, so we look at using cash for those. Any type of large software or large equipment purchases, we really try not to put that on the city credit card or the bond funds. And really, when we use cash, we fully appropriate that project in that year. So we're not trying to pay for a fire truck over a two-year period with cash because every, every year that cash stands for itself and so we budget within the available cash that we have. And we, when we look at line of credits, these are going to be your large projects. So their lifespan has to be 20 years or more because this is, this works kind of like your mortgage and there's payday someday. So you know, if you, if you build it, you got to pay for it. So these are new buildings, your major renovations, your major transportation projects, full roof replacements. We're not going to bond fund a partial roof replacement or a repair. These are going to be full roof replacements and these, this is so we can spread that cost over at least 20 years. Sometimes we do 30-year bonds, depending on what the project is, and it helps us stretch our dollars because of the impact to the general fund. So I mentioned leveraging outside funds we do, we get highway maintenance funding from VDOT that helps with our paving and a lot of our bridge maintenance, snow removal. Remember, we're not accounting, so in counties, VDOT pays for 100% of their projects, even their snow removal. And based on how much snow removal they're doing in our surrounding counties, that impacts how much funding there is for our city projects and how much they help us. So we have to keep that in mind. No snow, we don't want snow. So we do look at the state funding, most of that does come through VDOT, whether it's federal or state, a lot of it flows through VDOT. But our revenue share, they typically will pay 50% of a project. Smart Scale, we may get 100% or 90%. That's a good one to get, we don't get it very often. And then Transportation Alternative Grant, that's also a VDOT grant that's generally used for sidewalks. So that's what they like to fund. Now, in our enterprise funds, we're not really talking about those today. That's your airport water, sewer, stormwater, they've got other funding streams that help them pay for their projects through the FAA or the Virginia Resource Authority. So wide line of credit. About 10 years ago, we realized that we had, we would go to the bond market every couple of years and we would borrow enough money for two years' worth of projects. Well, we realized that due to all kinds of things, this one time we had a bridge and it came in way over a budget and we went back and we value engineered that bridge I don't know how many times. Well, the problem was I'd already borrowed the money. So I'm paying principal and interest for a project that hadn't even gotten started because we kept having issues with this bridge. And so in working with our financial advisors, we're like, let's do a line of credit. So what that means is it's, it's like a line of credit on your home. We go to a bank, they give us a line of credit and then we don't have to pay interest on that money till we draw it down, same way as your line of credit. I have one on my house, there's nothing on it, but I know I've got it if I need it. So that's why we do a line of credit. But I don't pay interest until I, I need it. It, it keeps us from doing as many permanent bond financing. It provides us generally a lower interest rate and it, it has saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars through these 10 years because we don't pay interest until we have to go get it and draw it down to pay for a project. Now, we can only use it for projects that qualify for bond funding because at the end of the line of credit, that two- or three-year period, we've got to go to New York, get a formal credit rating and permanently bond finance that line of credit. And then once that's done, we'll establish the next line of credit. And it really has saved a lot of money, but it helps us with get the lowest interest rate possible. And again, that AA+ credit rating that we have is critical because that also helps with our borrowing. Because when we go up there and we tell them how great they are, they can look at our financials and go, wow, they really are great. They're a stable city, they got a stable outlook and we know that they're going to be able to pay for these projects that they're looking at financing. So it's very important. So the tie between CIP and the general fund. So a lot of times Winter referred to this as the color of money and it is different. But the way debt service impacts the general fund is for how we pay for projects that are city capital projects and school projects. Because our enterprise funds, they pay for their own projects. They're not paid for out of the general fund, just our city capital and our schools' projects. And so the amount of debt service is based on our current and prior projects that are appropriated by City Council that are either line of credit or bond funded. Now, I have staff that, that has software and they keep track of all of our bond financing and all of our payments because we don't just have one mortgage, we have multiple mortgages as we, you know, stack up our debt and start paying for these projects and these others are getting paid down. So we have an extensive debt service that we keep up with to make those payments. So when you think about that, as we whittle some projects down, you don't see the immediate savings in your general fund because, remember, we have a line of credit for two or three years, then we permanent finance before we start paying for principal. So just because we're whittling down some projects this year, we're not going to see that impact for a couple of years. So it's not, it's not a one-for-one there, you got to think, remember that. And here's where our financial policies come in. In our financial policies, debt service cannot exceed 10% of our expenditures. So when you look at, if you're reducing your expenditures, you're also reducing your revenues, but you got to make sure and watch that debt service so that it's within those financial policies. Now, the other policy we watch, based on our financial policy for debt, our debt cannot, our total debt cannot exceed four and a half percent of our total real estate assessments. Well, that's a really big number, but we have to be careful because it's payday someday. We have to be able to pay for that debt. So that's why those two work critically together in what we can afford and how we pay for it. So that's really critical, how this ties back to our general fund. So looking at our project funding, the one on, well, it's my left, might be your right. We're looking at our funding source here. We're looking at our funding source here. We either have, like I've mentioned, line of credit, grants, or pay-as-you-go. So if we're looking just at 2026, because we only appropriate the first year of your CIP, the rest of it is a plan that gets rebalanced every year based on priorities. You'll see that we're at 67% for line of credit because of the number, mostly of transportation projects we've got. We've got $9.4 million of cash, which is 12.8%, and then our grant funding is at 20%. So that's a really good mix of projects for us, and we try to use as much grants as are available to us. So, and then if you look at the overall '26 through '30, we've got 60% of our line of credit, but you'll notice we've got 21% as pay-as-you-go. I guarantee you, I'm not going to have that much cash that will be rebalancing these, you know, every year to just spend what we have available. So that's an idea of our needs, but not necessarily what we have to spend. So, Winter has mentioned a number of times that we really have three key projects in this budget, and they really impact us in public safety, education, and quality of life. These projects are why people want to live in Lynchburg and raise their children here. So we've mentioned schools, maintenance, and infrastructure, and that's $60 million, and it'll be up to this council and the school board about how those funds are prioritized and how they spend those. The public library renovation, we've talked about, and how critical that is, that we've got a place that everyone can go and, and get books and resources and have a place to gather for programs. And then our Miller Park Pool, we really, we've lost over 800,000 gallons of water over the last two years, and so we've really got to have a pool that's going to last for 20 years. So...
Just take a minute. 800,000 gallons, how much does it take to fill an Olympic-sized pool?
Like 600,000 gallons.
660,000. So over, we have lost over an Olympic-sized pool of water over the last two summers, because we've been trying to figure out how to maintain and make sure that that thing's operating well. So just wanted, little context, keep it going.
Well, and then, and looking at this, we're trying to make sure that we maximize our pool use, and so we've, we're having conversations about whether that $10 million needs to be in '26 in order not to close a pool during pool season. So that's something that we'll be coming back to you with as well. But these are critical, really, and, and the pool is part of public safety, giving our kids somewhere to go and have something to do. And then, so we're going to start walking through these projects. I will remind you, I don't build them, I only pay for them. So I would ask that you, if you have technical questions, that you save those. We're going to have a work session on the 11th on CIP, and I'll be asking for questions that you have to be submitted to the city manager ahead of that, so we can get those answered. I probably don't have your technical answers today, so just a heads-up warning there. So we'll look mostly at the projects that are proposed for fiscal year '26. The first one there is your Circuit and General District Court. This has been in our CIP for years. It was discussed at one point about whether, wherever we built a new police station, whether it would include our courts, and it was determined that wasn't possible and couldn't afford to do it all at once. But this is something that's come up as a critical need. I know Winter gets a lot of calls about maintenance that needs to be done in those buildings and renovations for safety and all kinds of things. So that's really come up as a critical need. And then I've talked a little bit about major building repairs. In '25, we opted not to fund maintenance projects in '25 and kind of have a year reprieve where we needed that money for other things, and asked our project managers to really use '25 as a catch-up year to get a lot of those projects done. So it's really important that we don't forget, we've got over a million square feet of building space that we've got to take care of. So it's important that we fund that money back in there, and that is, the majority of that is cash. There's a couple of big HVAC projects in there that would be bond-funded or put on the line of credit. The library is here in the buildings, of course, and then we've got roof replacements and the transfer station. I know Winter's been talking to you about that project and the importance of it, especially now that Campbell County has voted not to expand the current landfill. So that's going to be a big need that's got to be in place within four years.
And I'd make one note there on that project, if you go back one slide. We already had funds appropriated for a transfer station. We're, we're still going through the process of determining what our options are there. What this will do is make sure that we have funds in place to move forward with any of those options, ahead of us actually needing to start spending money. We don't have a ton of time left here. If the optimal solution is less expensive than this, then we won't spend all this money that's appropriated. It will come back and be re-appropriated for other uses. But we thought it very important that, given the timeframe that we're operating under, that we have access and the ability to move forward with, with council's preferred choice as quickly as possible. We can talk more about this at the work session on the 11th as well, if council so chooses.
Okay. So the salmon orangish-colored here, these are every project in transportation that has VDOT or some type of grant funding to help pay for it. And I really do try to maximize those projects and make sure they stay in based on when they're approved by VDOT and the amount of funding that we get. So looking at these, the very first one is our GLTC buses, and you'll see a big number there. The city portion is only about 346,000 of that, so that, most of their funding is going to be either federal or state or both. So, but there's only a small portion of that that is actually our local cost. Our Bedford Avenue Bridge has come up as our next large, big bridge project. It's received a poor rating, so that it is time to replace that bridge, and we do have state-of-good repair VDOT funding for that, so that's paying for the majority of that bridge. Our Bedford Avenue corridor improvements, this is really public money to, to follow private. There's been a large investment by the private owner in there to get those restaurants open and whatnot, and we really want to use this to help grow our tax base, to keep people going there and in that area, and to really maximize that the best we can.
You'll see a lot of, a ton of pedestrians out there now, and a lot of this will make sure that there's some pedestrian safety improvements that occur.
So our bridge maintenance money is what we fund every year. We use some highway maintenance money for that. Our culvert replacement program, you'll notice that it's less one year, more the next. We design a project one year, and we build it in the following year. And then our general street improvements, this is money that we set aside every year to work with our developers, whether it's infrastructure, sidewalks, needs there, we work with those as people grow in, in our neighborhoods and our city there. The next one is our Lynchburg City for, Lynchburg Center for Industry Phase II. That's a TAC grant, which is VDOT funding. The next one is Lynchburg Expressway-Candler's Mountain Road Interchange. That is 100% VDOT-funded. They require this to be in our CIP because it is a city project, but it's 100% VDOT-funded. Our Ninth Street repairs and replacements, this is for our 23-year-old sidewalk and crosswalks that need some love, and we need to take care of those mostly for safety reasons, and we do have some funding to help with that. Our Public Works Infrastructure Improvements, these are citywide. This is just general maintenance that we know we need some money to help with those, but that, that is citywide. Then we have our retaining walls, and again, this '26 is time for a build. We, same as our culverts, next year is a design year, but '26 is a build year, so you'll see those alternate, big and small there as well. 501, 221, one-way pairs, there's extensive VDOT funding on this project. It seems like the project that just will not get done or go away. It has increased by about $8 million for inflation. We are requesting for help with that from VDOT, and hopefully, they're going to give us some more money to help pay for that inflation because it has been out there for so long. So hopefully, one of these days, we're going to get that done. And then we have some storm drainage repairs, and then our street overlay program is funded with our highway maintenance money. Continuing these, and just looking at '26, we've got Timberlake Road in the out years, but then we've got our traffic signal repair and replacement that we do get some funding for, and that is mostly, we try to do at least one replacement a year, and these are where there's span wire to go and be replaced with the mast arm, which are considered much safer. So we are looking at those every year. And then our Vassar Street at Langhorn Road intersection improvements, again, this is VDOT funding. It's 100% VDOT funding, so therefore, it's required to be in our book, but not city funds. And the same thing with the Ward's Ferry Road at CBCC, the Campus Drive Roundabout, that is also 100% VDOT-funded, but is required to be in our book because it is a city quote-unquote "project." So then when we look at economic development, our downtown development money, you don't, you see there's none there in '26, but there is money in the out years, about $100,000 a year. This is really maintenance money to take care of the bluff walk and various things that have been added downtown that we really need to take care of to make sure we're doing all the things to keep those in, in good shape. We've got the Ivy Creek Innovation Park Sites A and B in here. This has been in the CIP for a number of years, but it's more extensive money in 2026. The property toolkit is new. About $750,000 is really a pot of funds for either property acquisition, demolition, or repurpose. Throughout the years, opportunities come up. Sometimes we need to take down a building if maybe there's not enough money in community development for those funds. We might need to use these funds for that instead of coming for the reserve for contingency, or if we have opportunity to buy a building that we can repurpose and use it to grow our tax base. So this is really there for various reasons, but hopefully, it's going to help us better our neighborhoods and give us more opportunity.
And that is all cash funding?
Yes.
On that project?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Oh, and I just wanted to make mention here, our future streetscape improvements. If you looked at the '25 through '29 CIP, you'll see that it's $16 million. We've reduced that to $7.8 million. This is another one of those living, breathing projects that, as it's determined which blocks we go to next. Our next projects are in Court Street. The next two will be in Court Street. Those will not be as extensive as what we found in Main Street. I know Councilman Missions looks at that $53 million, which is a cost over 20 years with debt service, how we have to pay back our interest and everything. But Main Street, I attended all those project meetings, and we found empty rooms under sidewalks that we had to work with the building owners to fill those in, to make them safe. Every, every time they literally put the shovel in the ground, I feel like they found something else. So those, Main Street was quite the task. So, and then, he's got his finger up.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. It's also ballooned. You can see, it shows us what we're paying for streetscaping per city block in the ACFR, and it's ballooned from about $1.4 million a block to $2 million, right? So that's, that's one of the things that I'm looking at as well.
Right. Well, and part of that is inflation, and then part of it is, is how expensive some of those blocks were specifically on Main Street, as we, you know, dug the first ditch and found the original trolley lines still in the street. And then literally, I mean, there's a tunnel underneath Main Street that goes a couple of blocks that we had to deal with. So really, Main Street was fascinating if you look at it from a project standpoint, but it was expensive, as we had to deal with a lot of safety issues with what we found.
And just, just to point out that that's not, it's being done in conjunction with the, the water project, but it's not the same pot of money.
Correct. Yeah, the water replacement is a separate pot of money that comes out of the water fund to replace those pipes. And then we get to parks and recreation, and this looks like a big list, but we really have not had funds to take care of our parks as we should. So I'm trying to put as much cash into maintenance for parks and rec as I can this year, just to get some of this done and really take care of our parks. One of the bigger projects in here is, of course, Miller Park Pool, and then the other one is our Peaks View Athletic Field Lighting, is we really try to promote storm, sports tourism. It's important to have those lights so we can be competitive, to get more and more tournaments. There's a lot of money in sports tourism that will really help our tax base, so I think it's important that we get some of these done. And the rest of them really are a lot of maintenance-type projects. The Langhorn Road East Bridge and West Bridge, that's repairs to our Creekside Trail back with the flood in 2018. We've never gotten those bridges back to where they need to be, so this is finally taking care of those. So there's projects like that in here, that's just stuff that we really need to take better care of our parks. And our miscellaneous, you will see some public safety, large software projects in here. I've worked with Ryan Zudema and Daniel Davis, and we're really not ready to pull the trigger to get those done. And honestly, I didn't really have the cash this year to get those done, trying to get the maintenance projects done. So they were good with their, where they found out here. And then our Memorial Avenue Concord Turnpike Fuel Site Reconstruction, you know, we had a failure this year that we had to deal with, that our pumps had to close. So it's really important that we get this work done to make sure that, you know, we're being able to use our fuel pumps. And then the other one that's always in here is our radio replacements. And then our reserves, I talked about, the Lynchburg City Stadium Capital Maintenance Reserve, this is based on the MOU with the Hillcats, that we take care of that, our, our stadium. It's our asset that we need to take care of. And then in Snow Street and Bridge Reserve, this is a pot of money we set aside in case there's a lot of snow. This year, we've had the most snow we've had in years, which will probably, in 2025, we have the same $250,000. We'll be coming back to council to get you to appropriate that, more than likely to fill our salt barns. In years that we don't have to use this to replenish salt, we usually move it and use it for additional paving or some type of bridge maintenance. So we use those, but that's why it's Snow Street and Bridge. And then our skill, school projects. You will see the $60 million on here that would be bond-funded to be determined by this council and the school board. But we also have three cash-funded projects, which is our elementary playground modernization, and that's a safety issue that we need to take care of those playgrounds. The middle school career and technical education improvement, which is also cash-funded. This is new programming that they're putting in the middle schools, that they need to renovate some classrooms to be able to do those programs. There'll be more, there should be more information in your books about that project. And then paving and fencing improvements, again, cash-funded, to be able to take care of those needs also for safety. And then, we're at next steps. So as I mentioned, we will have a work session March 11th, and then I imagine, it would be really helpful to know your technical questions or any kind of questions you have on these projects. If I could get those, if you'll send them to the city manager before March 6th, so that staff has time to address those and make sure that we get you a good answer, that would be really helpful. And Sean Conway is now coming, and he's going to show you the new... And Sean Conway is now coming and he's going to show you the new dashboard that we have that I think you're going to be real excited about. So thank you.
While we're transitioning, Mayor, for the benefit of council and for particularly, I'm going to point you two out just for now.
Thank you.
How it works, when you send those questions, we'll usually start with those to begin with at the next meeting and once we've queued, and it really helps us because this becomes a very fast-paced, I think. What time did the budget tiers crank down on Monday night, 2:30 in the morning? Because Donna said she can't go anymore, anymore. So earlier that you get into us, we'll, we'll start with those to begin with and then kind of move from there. So really excited about this resource. This is a resource that our community can, can use. And I'll tell you that Sean, together with other city staff, and I'm going to really champion Sean on, on this critical resource that I think is kind of cool. So Sean.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Excited to be here this evening to introduce and give a quick demonstration about the capital improvement program dashboard. And so we developed this along with a lot of other departments, especially Donna's team. And we had three goals in mind for this dashboard. We really wanted to make sure that we made all the work that Donna and her team did accessible to the public. But our other goal is we wanted to make sure that we made it accessible in a way that was also interesting, interactive, and engaging for our users. So we didn't just want it to be a report that was out there, but we wanted to give the users some flexibility to manipulate the data and really dig into the data. And then a third goal that we had in mind really was we had to make sure that we built the dashboard for a very broad audience. Right? There's people like me who, although I've been with the city for about 17 years, wasn't very familiar with the CIP process. Right? So we wanted to make sure that we incorporated design elements that met the, you know, the new users, people who are new to the CIP or who may not be as tech savvy. Also wanted to meet the needs of folks who are very familiar with the CIP process or the budget process and are really tech savvy and really wanted to dig in to those numbers. And so the design element that we came up with is kind of this choose your own adventure type approach to the CIP dashboard. And we optioned a couple of different views for our users, a guided view, a summary view, and a detailed view. And so I'll just go ahead and kind of quickly give a demonstration of each one of those views and the features that are available in them. So we look at the guided view, our goal here, kind of as the name suggests, is really to give a lot of background information about the CIP and then slowly introduce the data at the end. So we walk the user through the CIP process, some background information. So here on the CIB, CIP basics page, you can see, you know, what is a capital project? What is the capital improvement program? Information along those lines. Then we introduce the user, as Donna hit on, kind of the process about how a project moves from, hey, there's this need that we've identified in a department, all the way through the process to where council approves a project as part of the budgeting process. We also wanted to anticipate some frequently asked questions and get ahead of some questions that users may have about what the CIP program is and some of the details about it. With a lot of budget stuff and especially my world, the tech world, there's a lot of jargon and terminology that although you try to minimize it, some of it you just can't avoid, you have to use it. So we wanted to put some of that down on paper to allow people to review that. As they're going through the dashboard, if they had questions, they can refer back to this, this page and kind of gets some additional information. And as always, one of our goals is to make sure we provide opportunities for our citizens to stay engaged in the process. And so we wanted to make sure that we advertise the budget engagement opportunities that are coming up in March. Eventually we'll have links to the CIP and the budget documents. And then, of course, we have previous budgets, I think for maybe 20 years, available on the city's website to go back and look at historical information as well. And a link to the comprehensive plan, as many of these brands, many of these projects interact with the comprehensive plan. And so as we guide the users through that information, the last step that we land on is kind of a summary data view or summary dashboard. And we wanted to strike a balance here really between usability and functionality. So we wanted to provide enough information to where users gain value from the dashboard, but we didn't want to overwhelm our users with a bunch of tools and functionality to where the dashboard was going to be difficult for them to use. And so for this, we, the summary view, we limited to just the first fiscal year of the five-year program. So this summary view only shows fiscal year 2026 proposed planning and funding. And we broke out all this information, a couple fun user interactive features. So we have an interactive map, you can see here on the left, that maps out the project locations. And the size of the dot kind of represents the planned or proposed funding for those locations. And so you're able to zoom in on this map, hover over any locations to kind of see a preview of the projects. We'll go ahead and click on Peaks View Parks here and you'll see that kind of lists a summary of the projects down at the bottom and kind of gives you a little bit of a narrative about it. And you'll notice that as I'm clicking and zooming in and selecting, the other graphs and charts on the screen are updating as well. And one thing I'll point out here, just because I've already selected something, is whenever you make a selection or a filter, there's a nice little eraser button that's available up top that you can click that will clear your selection, easily take you back to the beginning. Because it's, it's easy to get deep into this data and get a little bit lost. And so I'll just briefly go over some of the cards on the right. We have the summary pane that kind of keeps a running total of the proposed funding and how many projects that covers. So as you filter and search, that number will be adjusted. And we also wanted to provide a breakdown by ward, a breakdown by fund, and a breakdown by service area. And so not only are these charts and graphs and tables informative, but they're also interactive as well. So if you only wanted to look at, say, Ward 1 and isolate Ward 1, you can click on Ward 1, it'll filter the map, zoom in on the map, and it'll also update the other charts and tables as well to give you that summary information for just Ward 1. Likewise, that works on the tables as well. So if you wanted to look at, say, the sewer funded projects, you can click on sewer, it'll zoom in the map, show you all the sewer projects for the city, as well as updating the ward and service area graphs and charts as well. And so that was our summary view. So if we go back to the homepage, if you click on summary view, you essentially just land at the end of that guided view. But, you know, if you're returning to the CIP dashboard and you want to skip all the narrative, that's just a quick link for you to jump back to that, that specific view on that dashboard. But like we mentioned at the beginning, we also wanted to provide a little bit more functionality for those users who wanted to dig into and explore the data a little bit more. And so we created a detailed view. And the detailed view is very similar to the summary view, it just has a lot more bells and whistles that come along with it. So you'll see up top that we have the same summary pane, the same breakout by ward, fund, and service area. In order to save a little bit of space, we kind of hid the tables behind the charts so you can still access the tables. So if you're one of those people who really enjoy seeing numbers, you know, you can flip to the table. If you're a more visual person, like to see the charts, you can toggle back and forth. One added feature that we added here too, is you can view the projects not only by funding, which we're looking at now, but you can also view it by total number of projects because we know sometimes that's important to see how many projects there are. And again, you can flip back and forth between the table and the funding sources. So that part is very similar to the summary view, but I'll jump into some of the items that are a little bit different about the detailed view. One key thing right off the bat is we include all five years of the CIP in the detailed view, so it's not just limited to 2026. It has all five years worth of projects on this part of the dashboard. And then on the left, you'll see one of the things is more advanced filtering and selections. So if you're curious about selecting a specific geography like Ward 1 or Ward 2, Ward 3, Ward 4, you can go ahead and do that over here. One thing that may not have been apparent on the summary view is we do have projects that cross boundaries. So we separated those out separately. We do have a lot of projects that are marked citywide projects. So these are projects like Donna Menz and like the fence repair and rehabilitation that are just kind of, the locations are determined at a later date, or they're widespread throughout the city like the lead and copper water project where there could be hundreds or thousands of locations. And of course, we have some assets that are outside the city like the airport and some water tanks and, and water assets as well that you can look at. So we'll go ahead and take a look at Ward 2. And then we can also break down by your, your funds. So if you're looking at the general fund-supported capital improvement projects for like city and schools, you can filter. You have the ability here to select multiple. If you're more interested in some of our enterprise funds, you can look at, say, sewer, storm, and water. And again, it's really easy to get kind of clicked deep into this, so we provide you the ability to reset your filters. And for this demonstration, I'll go ahead and just choose city projects for Ward 2. Then, of course, as we mentioned, you can break it out by year too. For all five years of the CIP, you can just either unselect everything or select all five years. And I'll go ahead and look at 2026. And then we know a lot of times we reference things by their name, their location, or the description of the project. And so we also provide some abilities for you to be able to search. If you want to say, look for all the city projects at, at City Hall, we can do that and it'll further refine the filtering down to just City Hall projects.
Close. Really, really close.
Another one of the features that is different is we provide the funding schedule. So if you wanted to look at all the funding for the, all five years, whether in terms of activity, so that's stuff like construction, consultant engineering, or equipment purchases, you can view that. And additionally, you can view it by funding source. So if you wanted to look at it by line of credit or pay-as-you-go, this table will be updated based on the three filtered projects we have currently based on all of these filters. And the final feature that's a little bit different and allows you to dig in deeper is you'll notice on the right that this list has been adjusted based on the filtering and these are individual projects. It's something I forgot to mention is a lot of the tools on here have tool tips. So as you hover, you'll notice that there's little tool tips that pop up that prevents you from having to click to get in for more information. But on the individual project side of things, you can select an individual project. At the bottom, there'll be a details pane or button that will allow you to open up a details page specific to that project, which is probably, just combines all of this into a simple kind of one pager, if you will, provides information about the fund, department, service area. Eventually we'll have a link back to the budget document once that's published, gives you the project name and a narrative about the project, priority information, and why the project may be important now for, for the city to tackle. And then, of course, we may return back to the dashboard. And I think one other thing to show here too, is we do have help available, so all of our pages should be able to link to a help page. Kind of just gives you an idea, a breakdown of the views. Part of this demonstration, I already gave some of the information I hit on. Hopefully soon we'll have some how-to videos, just short, quick hit videos for people who may need some assistance navigating the page. And then we also want people to be able to reach out and ask questions. And Citizens First staff graciously volunteered to field those questions for us. So if they're technical questions or if something's broken with the dashboard, they'll most likely come to me. If it's a question specifically about a project or the CIP or the budget, they'll probably be referred back to Donna and her team in her office. We will, great, great. I'm glad you asked that question. I've had a big, bold letters. Either this evening or tomorrow, the city manager will be emailing you all a link. And then there's also a public link that's going to be published to the city's website tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor? Can we add the revenue to that? So you can show where the revenue is coming from as far as the revenue, the operating revenue and the budget?
For this, it is specifically focused on just the CIP portion of it. So I mean, that could be something that we take in consideration for future iterations of a dashboard like this and as we build out dashboards.
It'd be really good to see where the money's coming from and where the money's being spent. Because when I looked at that, I saw not a lot of money being spent in Ward 1, not a lot of money being spent in Ward 3, not a lot of money being spent in Ward 4. There's a lot of money being spent in Ward 2.
Yeah.
So where's the revenue coming from in the city proportionate to how the money is being spent? I think that in, you know, with being able to detail this information, the way that that was put together, it should be, and it could be a different dashboard or something along those lines, but I think it would be pretty valuable to be able to show our citizens where the money's coming from and where the money's being spent.
What we will have specific to the CIP is the funding sources for each project, whether that be, as Donna said, cash, grants, the type of grant, and then if it's line of credit or, or debt. I think that's what you're, what you're asking for is two very different things.
Sure.
One is, one is very much the operating budget and revenue. The other is the capital plan and how we're going about funding it. So we'll, we'll see if there's some, something we can, we can do there, but it's, it's two very different things.
Sure. Got it. Just be, be a good visualization.
Mr. Mayor, that's our CIP, just as a reminder, March 11th, full work session. We will dig into this. Today was to listen, to engage. I don't know if your socks were knocked off, but I was certainly not. My socks were knocked off. So I just kudos to the team to create a resource. I know how important it is for the city council to have our public to be able to engage, to, to kind of interact. And this is a resource in the 20-plus years that I've been doing this. I have, I haven't seen something like this and Sean did this in 15 minutes.
I just want to echo, appreciate that. Appreciate our hard team and the city manager and this team for putting this all together. I'm always just so impressed. Trying to keep everything together in the funding streams and how to make sure our community, our city stays strong financially and to keep all that together and track all that. That's a heavy job, so we really appreciate, we're so blessed to have you and your team. You guys do such an amazing job. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
If they could just take their Wildcats, that would help Donna.
I love dashboards, as you probably have heard. I designed websites for a living and I know the amount of work that it takes because this is basically going to be for, for computer use is what it's designed for. Sean, it's, it's great, great thing you're doing. I haven't seen, I learned more than five minutes watching your dashboard than, I don't want to.
Listening to me.
I'm a visual guy, so that's what it is. But thank you very much for what you're doing. I look forward to future iterations. Had no idea this thing was going to be rolled out this quick. You kicked all the tires, it's all good.
Yes, we, we've taken it pretty hard.
It's still under construction, but that's normal.
Yeah.
And websites, that's, that's something I'm used to. You're going to get a lot of suggestions from the public. They're going to want to quit, an easy, quick way to do it. My only suggestion is, because we'll have input, certainly as council, but put it out to the brain trust, you know, for ideas to improve on.
Absolutely.
You know, people that are in it will be free with their information. About one out of every 50 ideas will be usable, so you understand that. But you'll may get some genius stuff that'll really transform it. I would say put a link in there for suggestions sort of thing to tap into that public brain trust, which doesn't cost anything but a little bit of his time and to kind of, if we could have access to that, see, see some ideas for improvement, constant improvement. That's another CP, CIP sort of thing. But I think I had one little thing, this is a wish list down the road. It's way too early, you can be talking about this honestly, but a lot of times when people drill into their favorite spot in the dashboard, it takes them a little while to get there, multiple steps, lots of clicks, having designed websites, a hyperlink shortcut that you could customize to build it, to take it right to the area you're most focused on, is probably something everybody in this room will use and something everybody out there in the public will use. So going forward way down the road, I would suggest that as a possible addition, 3.0.
Great feedback, Mr. Vice Mayor. As we transition, Mr. Mayor, into business side briefings. One thing that you said there, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I, I should have highlighted it more, parallel to the questions that you posed, are obviously the, the questions that we're receiving from the public. So you, it'll be when we respond to you, it'll be similar, there's a similar place in and or landing spot for our public that if there are questions about the budget, they can propose and that we answer and we compile them and we upload them to the city website and also for your, so, Mr. Mayor, back to you for business side briefing.
Thank you. First item on business item briefing, changes to Third Precinct, Second Ward, and First Precinct, Third Ward. Mr. Dan Pence.
Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Would like to have you consider taking action at the public hearing on March 11th to make some changes to our polling place locations for the Third Ward, First Precinct, and the Second Ward, Third Precinct. And this is something that the Electoral Board has been pondering for a little bit, but they went ahead and made some action in this February meeting. So the electoral ward of City of Lynchburg, voted at the meeting on February 6th, 2025, to change polling place, Fourth Precinct 301, from the Public Library to the West Lynchburg Baptist Church. Same meeting, they also voted to move the polling place for Precinct 203, from Jubilee Family Center to Greater Brookville Church. We've examined both of the polling places, we've checked them for ADA compliance, and they do meet the requirements of Section 242-310 of Code of Virginia. they do meet the requirements of Section 242-310 of Code of Virginia. The reason for, we're asking for this change is that the current polling place for 203, Jubilee Family Center, will no longer be able to serve as a polling place, as per their own decision. Greater Brookville Baptist Church, excuse me, Greater Brookville Church has agreed to serve as a polling place in that, in their place, and is within the same polling precinct and is just down the road. Public Library, which presently serves as the polling place for Precinct 301, is actually no longer in Ward 3. There was a registering change that actually moved that polling place out of the, of the ward. And so, this Electoral Board has pondered this for a couple cycles and feels that it's a good idea to actually have that polling place within the, within the boundaries of the ward. And so, we saw the alternative place, West Lynchburg Baptist Church stepped up to assist with this, and so, we're suggesting the city council go ahead and approve, have a hearing, and then approve that change. So our expected action is that the city council should approve the use of these two locations, Greater Brookville Church for Precinct 203, West Lynchburg Baptist Church for Precinct 301, starting with the June 17th, 2025 primary election, continuing through all subsequent elections for the indefinite future. And right now, we're expecting the public hearing and vote to take place on March 11th, 2025. Just as another comment on this, we do like the Public Library as a location, a lot of people know where that is, for polling. And so, we're going to propose, and we don't, I don't think there's any action for the city council to take at this point, but we're going to propose to the parties over there at the library in the city, that we use that location for a backup polling location. It's centrally located to a number of other polling places, and in the event that we have something like a water main break, or something, a power outage, or some other emergency on Election Day, or just before Election Day, preventing us using some particular location, that would actually be a breaking location for about seven of the, of the total of 18 precincts. So, we're going to continue to try and use that location. A lot of people know where it is, but we would use it as a backup location and emergency basis as, as needed.
Thank you for the presentation. Did both of these changes pass the municipal board?
Yes, they did. Our floor chair is here.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question?
I just wanted to know if they passed you to answer the question.
Yes, they did.
Is there any more discussion?
I can just speak quickly to the one in Ward 3, where I represent. I did the site visit with the registrar, and Dan and I were very, very pleased with it as a precinct chief. It's more than adequate to, to do it, and I'm very much in favor of it. I hope my fellow colleagues would support it.
We were glad for the Jubilee Center for the time that we were able to serve. But again, it was questioned about conflict by me being on the city council and having at Jubilee. So to make it peaceful, I said, go ahead and move it. So I'm just happy that they found another location right in the same area. Thank you for that, yes.
And I'd like to say thank you to you and your organization for the service you guys have provided to the city as a polling location for the time that you did. So, we appreciate your volunteering that site, and it's time to make a change. That's fine, we're happy to do that, but we appreciate your, your assistance.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pence. Thank you. Thank you. Next item is 1600 1602 McVeigh Road, rezoning residential. This item will appear before council for action on March 11th. Ms. Rachel Fleschhausen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor as well. The purpose of this petition is to rezone approximately one acre from R1 Low Density Residential to R2 Low Medium Density Residential District. Originally, this petitioner had requested R3 Medium Density Residential zoning. After the Planning Commission recommended denial on January 22nd, the petitioner submitted a revised request for R2 Low Medium Density Residential. Next slide. The future land use map currently recommends low-density residential use for the property. These areas are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four units per acre. The existing R1 Low Density Residential District zoning was established in 1978. Next slide. The properties contain two existing residences and are surrounded by residential uses. If the petition is approved, the properties would be configured into three parcels. As mentioned previously, the petitioner had originally sought R3 zoning on this property, which would have allowed the two lots to become three lots with up to three duplexes. The request did not align with the future land use map recommendation for low-density residential, which calls for the single household homes. Planning Commission was also concerned with the altering the character of an established neighborhood. After the Planning Commissioner, the petitioner submitted a request to revise the rezoning from R3 to R2. The R2 district was originally recommended by staff to this petitioner, and would align with the future land use map recommendation, and would allow an additional home to be constructed between the existing residences. So this item will return for a city council public hearing on March 11th.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Missions?
So just to be clear, what we're doing is we're adding a lot between the two homes for them to, basically, we're drawing new lot lines so that they can...
The, the, the R2 zoning would allow for smaller lot sizes, so with the current zoning, they can only have two, but they would get to add a third with the rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have 815, 825, 832, 833, 903, 9038, and 906 Wiggerton Road, future, future land use rezoning, the Village at West Point. This item will appear before council for action on March 11th. Mrs. Freshen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this petition is to amend our future land use map and to rezone approximately 53 acres to allow the construction of 750 total residential units. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition on February 12th, citing the need for housing, with the caveat that approval of this petition would require the city to allocate funds for Wiggerton Road improvements. Next slide. The subject properties were annexed into the city in 1976. The properties are currently zoned R2 Low Medium Density Residential, I3 Heavy Industrial, and R3C Medium Density Residential District Conditional, as shown on the map, with the R3C portion being majority of the property. The Resource Conservation District, which is the curvy green part along the bottom of the larger parcel there, is located along Ivy Creek and is not proposed for rezoning. The future land use map you see on the right recommends low and medium density residential uses for these properties. Low-density residential uses are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre, medium-density residential being characterized by smaller lot, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhomes at densities of up to 12 units per acre. The petition proposes to amend the future land use map to high-density residential. These areas are generally, consist of high-density townhome or multifamily housing, with densities ranging up to 30 units per acre. Next slide. If the petitions are approved, the property would be rezoned as, or sorry, developed into up to 750 residential units, consisting of 600 condominiums, 75 townhomes, and 75 patio homes. Two conceptual plans have been submitted. These plans note that the layout is subject to change based on market demands. And on the next slide, the petitioner submitted six proffers as part of this petition. Three of those proffers relate to traffic. The petitioner was required to perform a traffic study as part of this proposal, which shows that the 750 units would generate about 4,900 new trips per day on Wiggerton Road. The current average trip count for this portion of the road is approximately 4,100 trips, so the development would more than double the daily trips on the road. In summary, the submitted traffic study showed that improvements would be needed at three locations to mitigate impacts from this development, and these are listed on the slide, which is traffic signal or roundabout at the US 501 Southway, South Expressway ramp at Wiggerton Road, and extended left turn lane at the intersection of Wiggerton and Old Forest Roads. And the traffic study also showed that left turn lanes into the site are warranted. Typically, with most public hearings, when a traffic study is submitted, they would state the impacts of the proposed development. The study would suggest X, Y, and Z mitigation, in this case, turn lanes, traffic light changes, et cetera. And the petitioner typically would submit proffers stating that they will do those improvements to mitigate the impacts. These proffers are a little less straightforward, so staff is continuing to work with the petitioner to better understand the wording and specific details of, of how their proffers relate to these improvements. We have received an updated version of the proffers as recently as yesterday, so we're evaluating those. Staff's concern with the version of the proffers that went to Planning Commission that are in your packet is that they lack clarity on timing and specifics of how these traffic improvements will be done, and they don't provide staff with a clear understanding of the petitioner's financial commitment to those improvements. The cost of the improvements, which they are asking to share with the city, have also not been provided by the petitioner. So staff will be continuing the dialogue with the petitioner on these proffers ahead of the public hearing on March 11th. And as I mentioned, we just got an update yesterday, and so, we'll remain in communication with them between now and our next meeting on March 11th.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Perali?
I just want to highlight for our packets and those watching at home, there was a petition attached with the presentation expressing opposition, not necessarily indicating one way or another, but I just, that's not normally done, so I wanted to make sure that folks at home know, I, at least I see it, and wanted to point it out for everybody else. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Timmer?
I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name. May I call you Rachel?
Sure, please, that's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Ms. Rachel, okay, I have, I just have a number of questions to kind of follow up. And I'm looking at the map with Ivy Creek coming around, and so, you talk about that not being developed, but are there any, like ancillary property developments that, that we're looking at in addition to that, as far as commercial that would be coming in because of the nature of this development? Is there anything else projected, kind of adjacent to this particular development as a, as a result of this coming in?
So, nothing else at this time. There is a large commercial portion, commercially zoned parcel across Wiggerton Road off of Scotham Street and Saturn Street that was zoned that way many years ago, and there are a number of proffers on it that restricted to, I think, a large office park. So that's not, that's not in play at this time.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. And then, this, this plays into the proffer question, and so, it may have to be parsed out more, but I'm curious with the nature of the tax revenue, because I've heard of a number of potential developments along Wiggerton, and I'm in contact with a number of the residents on that petition, and having discussions with them as well. So, with the traffic situation, and, and all that would be entailed there, is, do we have precedent as far as, in Lynchburg, I know other municipalities have done this, where there are projects bonded for the road out of the tax dollars of the developments, so that it would be specifically going to the infrastructure improvements that are associated with the necessary, the necessary infrastructure? Winter, you're making some faces, so I don't know if I'm looking at you or talking to Rachel.
There isn't anything that I'm currently aware of that would leverage the, what I call it, outside the 10-feet infrastructure at this point?
Okay. Because I'm just curious as far as with those tax revenues, if they just go straight to the general fund, or if there's a way to earmark where we're saying, hey, this is an area that has development interest, and ideally, working with the residents to feel like, feel out what they would be comfortable with, or not comfortable with, but what of those funds can be appropriated specifically to these needs that would be necessary for the infrastructure concerns?
What you're talking, I think, is a TIF. I think that's, is that fair to say?
Like TIF financing?
Yeah, TIF, yeah, TIF.
Tax increment.
So I said...
I don't think it'd be TIF, because it wouldn't go into the private property, so it wouldn't be...
But you're going to, you, and back and forth, if we're talking about how, this is how I understand it, is that the, the projects that I've worked on have to leverage a certain amount of revenue to build back the infrastructure necessary to complete the project. So if it's not been, at least as I understood, it's not been currently contemplated by the developer to expend the resources to meet those other elements. So one way in which to, if you're looking at the project as a whole, you'd think about drawing the area that doesn't currently have the, the resource that we're talking about, and whether or not you could pull or propose the revenue, I don't know if it would be enough.
Right, so there's, one way to think about this is you could do a TIF or tax increment financing, where you circle the, where you basically draw a circle around the, the new development, and you set the current level of assessment in that area at X, and then, any growth in that assessed value in that area would go into a TIF, which is a separate fund. And then, that revenue could essentially be used then to pay the debt service on capital improvements that were made. So that's, that's one, that, that's how the, the TIF would work. Typically, on residential-only developments, we don't, we haven't done, we, we would not contemplate a TIF, nor would we typically contemplate partially funding infrastructure improvements that were required as part of a traffic study. If you're talking about a development that is commercial in nature, that's going to produce jobs, that is going to sort of broadly impact the tax base, then typically, or that is a mix, that is mixed use in nature, then, then potentially, that is something that would be more likely to be used. One of the, the issues that we run across is, with growth like this, we want the growth going into the general fund to support the, the, the general operations of the city. Without that growth, you know, it becomes, it becomes difficult to support those...
Well, that's the value of the homeownership with the tax base and keeping it in the city as opposed to...
Yeah, yeah.
To your point, too, about an example, Mr. Martin has, has one that he can acknowledge.
Well, sure. Good evening, council. So, I was listening on TV. So, Rosedale was similar to what you were discussing, but it was only related to the commercial development, which is what Mr. Patrick was talking about. So, there was an agreement in place, really between the EDA and the Rosedale developers, that as the commercial development built out, any increased tax revenues from that would be paid back to the developer to go for the road improvements that were necessary. So, the difference to that, though, is, is that the developer paid for them upfront, and the city reimbursed. At this time, there's been no reimbursements made, because they had not developed any commercial development. Again, that was just for commercial, so we do have kind of a model in place, but that's the only time it's been done.
That's helpful, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may interject very briefly, there's a similar example. I don't know if council adopted it or not. I think four years ago now, council was considering a regional, within the city, a regional allocation of meals tax, entertainment taxes for downtown that would specifically go in back to downtown. I don't remember if that passed or not, nor do I remember my position on the matter. But regardless, that's the only other instance where, in my recollection, where we even have something remotely similar to that. Obviously, that's not residential, so...
We don't, we do, we do not currently have a did, a downtown improvement district, or a bid, a business improvement district in downtown.
I think it was something we were requesting through our legislative agenda.
Oh, got it, okay.
Could be wrong. Anyway.
The, the TIF approach is helpful. I was thinking of it more in the context of like a bonded approach, but regional, based on the revenues from developments, and, and hoping to have, and continuing to have discussions with individual residents along Wiggerton, as far as what are the specific obstacles that they are uncomfortable with, or is it opposed to the development altogether? So, it is something I'd like to explore on the traffic side, and I don't know the discussions happening around the proffers, so I can follow up on that, but it may be an option.
So what they proposed at this time is a cost-sharing formula based on pro-rata traffic counts, basically. So, for example, one of the improvements would be a 85-15-ish city private split between this developer and the city, or 65 city, 35 private. So that's, that's what the discussion has been so far, but we'll continue that conversation.
And we don't have total numbers for any of that yet?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Missions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Rachel, for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. One is, I'm looking at this, this RFP from the Economic Development Authority for kind of a similar type project. Is that, how close is that to the parcels that are...
So it's, I guess, adjoining technically. They've actually got the property labeled there on that, on that plan.
So it's where it says Lynchburg Economic Development Authority parcel?
Right, yes.
So we've actually put out an RFP through the EDA to, to try to get residential owner occupied?
The EDA did issue an RFP for residential development, and they are... The EDA did issue an RFP for residential development, and they are evaluating those responses.
Excellent. And is this all supposed to be owner-occupied? Is that, is that right?
They have proffered that they would be four sale units.
Oh, that's great.
Of course, can't control who owns them and maybe rents them out, but...
Yeah, that's fantastic. Those are the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I had a question, Mayor.
Mr. Dean?
I'm not familiar with how this normally works, but what's the precedent for, I noticed that the road improvements that they're proffering are mile, mile and a half away from their actual property. Is that traditional for a developer to offer that kind of fixing public roads that aren't even super close to where they're developing? Do you have any examples of that, if it, if it is?
None, none come to mind of that distance. I will say that this is sort of a unique situation in that we know where almost all the traffic is going to go. There's really only Expressway or Old Forest, or Wiggington to Old Forest. So it's easy to imagine where those trips are going to go and which intersections will be impacted most.
Thank you. Ms. Timmer?
I believe some of this was indicated with the planning commission, I'm going through the minutes, but I, timeline for development, phases of development, and also the 501-221 intersection reworking.
So I believe they are, the 501-221, and I know that was just mentioned here in the CIP presentation, so I don't know if anything has changed since then, because they've had so many hurdles with that project, but I believe that's about a five-year project?
2032.
Right, and they, this developer expects to, I believe, begin construction, if this is approved, within about two years, and around the time that that is coming online, they expect to be halfway with 375 units, with 10 years being the full 750.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Propose Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Flood Plane Management. This item will appear before council for action on March 11th. Ms. Erin Hawkins.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you all so much. What we've been working on is looking over the ordinance and making the appropriate updates. We have had a floodplain ordinance for a number of years. The mapping in the city dates back to the 1970s, and really, we haven't had an overhaul update to the floodplain mapping in quite a while. FEMA is currently working on that concurrently and moving forward with that. We've not gotten the, the official notification that it's been, that it's moving forward yet. We're still in a very preliminary phase with them. But with that regardless, we still need to update our ordinance, and what you, what you have is, what will come to council in March 11th, is the updates to the, to the ordinance. Next slide, please. So really and truly, nothing with the ordinance is changing the business as usual in how the city has implemented the, the city's floodplain management ordinance. The, the major changes that you can see outlined is aligning with the state and federal minimum requirements to have in an ordinance. A lot of it is terminology updates and making sure that what the, the requirements are, to staff's opinion, is more clearly laid out in the ordinance. Two, what you could consider substantive changes to the ordinance or items, or the bullet points two and three on the screen. The first is that city staff took a look at the floodway uses. So floodway is a more constricted area of the larger floodplain area. It's where the, the flow of water really is. And within that, where you may have pre-existing structures, the use of those structures were very limited in what that structure could be used for. There wasn't really much, there wasn't really room for adaptive reuse for those existing structures. What the, the second bullet point is, and, and this ordinance update would allow the underlying zoning uses to be an allowable use unless they weren't expressly prohibited by the floodplain requirements. So there are certain uses that are certainly prohibited in a floodway. There's no new construction, there's no expansion of existing structures, but there can be an adaptive reuse of an existing structure. And this change allows those underlying uses as an allowable use for that existing structure. And there, there may be a handful of properties that would be eligible for adaptive reuse with that change in the city. The third bullet on the screen, the city has had a longstanding practice of having a 12-inch freeboard, and I do have two other slides to this, if it may help explain what freeboard is. So next slide, please. I'll ask to go back in a second. But freeboard is that additional elevation above a water surface elevation. So if the water surface elevation is the top of the table, that 12 inches higher is the minimum, has been the minimum standard for protecting a structure. That's whether it's elevating a structure or floodproofing, using flood-resistant materials to protect the structure itself. So what the city staff, and there was a, a number of departments that worked on this update, it was community development, water resources, the city attorney's office, and economic development, all were a part of the discussions in making the recommendation of increasing that freeboard from 12 inches to 18 inches. It is a practice that we are seeing across the state, and I have actually put in a request to see, you know, kind of how many have gone to a higher standard. But from what we are seeing, or what I am observing, is that there are many other localities that are adopting a higher freeboard requirement, and that applies to new structures, so moving forward. It's not a retroactive application of the standard unless there is a substantial change to an existing structure. So freeboard, this new requirement would, or higher standard, would be for new construction or substantially improved construction. Substantially improved is where it is more than 50% of the market value of the, the property before the proposed changes. What that does, it does allow for older buildings that may not have the floodproofing protections afforded to them to come into standard, but that, that is generally a very, it's very rare that we have seen a substantial improvement come in. It's as far as I know that we have not had one in my tenure with the city that has met the substantial improvement classification. However, the freeboard requirement with a higher standard of 18 inches does afford a greater protection for any property that has a structure. So just because your property may touch a floodplain doesn't necessarily mean that this, that this requirement applies to you. It applies specifically to the structure if the structure was, is within the floodplain area. So I've had a number of conversations with residents calling and asking questions and clarifying that just because, you know, you're, maybe a back portion of your properties in the floodplain does not mean that this pertains to your structure. This is only for structures physically within the, the floodplain area itself. So those are the recommendations, so if you might go on back one. So those are the recommendations that we have for, for council consideration, aligning the, the city code with the minimum requirements, updating the, the allowable uses in the floodway, and recommending a higher standard of 18 inches for the, the freeboard requirement. And again, this will come before council on the March 11th meeting.
Any discussion?
Quick question, I don't understand. I can see if somebody's got a $10 million building and they're going to spend $5 million on a substantial improvement to the building, they're probably wanting to protect their $10 million investment, and they've already thought about doing this and maybe more. But however, you go down to the lower end of the economic spectrum, and I'm just curious if it's a $10,000 structure. I don't even know what buildings we're talking about, and, and they're going to do a $5,000 roof. Are they going to then have to also foot the bill to meet this new standard?
The number of structures that we have that would, that could potentially fall within this is, there are a couple of hundred, a few hundred structures that this could, you know, apply to. If you are not hitting that substantial improvement mark, you're not going to have to do that. You're not going to have to bring it up to code. There is also a reference in here that if it is bringing it up to code for like a code violation or just, you know, some very basic information, I believe I had it in the planning commission slide before, so I know that is in the, the notes from the previous meeting, but that does not trigger bringing it up to code. So whether or not you have, and so substantial improvement, I had a question asked, is, you'll go to the last slide for me, please, Alicia?
Last slide.
Last slide, oh, thank you, Metchie, so sorry. So there it is, it was in there. So it's any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or improvement of a structure, the cost of which is exceeding the 50%. So I mean, it is really a, a major overhaul for that to, to happen. The likelihood that on a, the lower end of a, of a structure, I can't say that it wouldn't happen, but that it really hasn't happened. We haven't seen the building permits. And usually speaking, we try to steer development outside of the floodplain, or they're elevated to begin with through fill, if they're able to stay out of it completely. So we really haven't seen, to my knowledge, substantial improvement have to occur in order to meet the, the requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I dealt with this ordinance in Roanoke County, and it was an absolute nightmare with a house that caught on fire, and it hit that substantial improvement mark. And if we start going down this road in that situation, if people don't have the coverage for the code upgrades, then we're going to be in a, basically a stalemate for people to be able to get back into their homes after they've had a fire, because the substantial improvement typically revolved around the construction estimate versus the assessed value, and I know the mayor can probably speak to this. We've got a lot of homes in Lynchburg that probably have a much lower assessed value than it would actually cost to repair them or replace them after a fire, especially some of the older homes. And just like that, you're over that 50% substantial improvement, and if it's in a floodplain, it would trigger issues. Initially, Roanoke County was asking us to elevate the entire home, and we were able to get around it, and it was, it was a challenge, but it delayed that by months. So what I would ask, and I don't know if this is something that we can do, but is there a way for losses, actual losses, right? So, you know, it's, it's not like a building permit to remodel or put an addition on, but it's a building permit to repair something and return it back to what it was after a loss, that it wouldn't trigger this, because I can tell you right now, when somebody's home catches on fire, they just want to get back in it. And the issues that this can create to do that are quite a nightmare.
Right.
Does that make sense?
It certainly makes sense. I can investigate that prior to the public hearing and bring that information back to you. I can talk with our state officials and kind of have a better understanding of if there is any additional caveat that could be applied to this. I can bring that back to you.
Sounds good, because it's, it really comes down to, you know, coverage. If people don't have, there's certain riders you can have on your insurance policy, if you don't have them, then, then you're, then you're out of luck, and you might not be able to get back into your home.
Right. It may be worth noting that, you know, if a, if a structure, whether it's in a floodplain or not, it would have to be brought up to date if it were to have to be reconstructed. So in the event something was a total loss, building it back is really going, if it's a total loss and having to rebuild, that is different. But I understand, and if, if we're looking at it from a, a difference between a total loss versus a partial loss in understanding what the reconstruction is, is that kind of what...
In this particular instance, we replaced the whole, we took the whole roof off the house, we reframed the entire roof, but the upstairs had to be gutted because of the smoke and fire damage, and then everything downstairs had to be cleaned and repainted because of the smoke damage. So that stuff adds up when you're looking at fire damage, and when you're looking at that total cost, if it exceeds that 50% threshold of the assessed value, which is usually, I think, how these, these work, when you're looking at some of these older homes that could be in floodplains that, that are built in ways that they don't build things anymore, it's extremely expensive to bring them back to what they were. And while I understand what this is trying to accomplish, and I can appreciate that, I don't want to see us arbitrarily do something that creates challenges for people when they're having a loss and all they want to do is get back in their homes, right? If they can get back into the way it was, I think that's acceptable.
We'll make sure we bring back as much information as possible for the hearing.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Historical homes, we have to put those back just like they were.
I'm sorry, what was that first part?
Historical.
Historical. There are some variances that can be allowed to the, to the historical nature of a structure, so there are some allowances to, to being able to restore it to historical specifications outside of the floodproofing or flood protection requirements. In certain situations, not all of them, but in, in certain situations, there can be.
I see, this, this is geared more towards the Concord Turnpike area where Thomas Johnson Furniture was. It is a floodplain.
It is, yes, sir.
And I believe those steps leading up to his place is, what, about 16 inches?
I'm not familiar.
Okay, well, anyway, you would have to raise that another 10 inches to, to get that code.
Well, you wouldn't have to raise it. So there's, there's a differentiation between elevating the structure versus floodproofing the structure. So the instance, if the, the building down on Concord Turnpike, I know Mr. West owns one of them and is interested in redeveloping it, he would not have to elevate that structure, but he would have to look at floodproofing that structure. And that was a, a conversation that, a very preliminary conversation that we had with our engineers about how they would be able to go about maintaining the historical significance of the structure, but also providing the flood protection needed to it. So there are things that can be done.
Yes.
Floodproofing on the inside, elevating of electrical HVAC systems, certain mechanical operations to making sure that it's floodproofed, and then looking at the structure itself. So you wouldn't necessarily have to sit there and raise that structure, but there's, so there's a distinction between floodproofing, which is using flood, certain materials and building methodologies to protect the structure versus actual elevation. Usually with the elevation, you're seeing that in residential structures, and that's really meant to make sure that the living space for that structure is adequately protected from a, from a flood event, and, and not understand the, the, the situation that you've brought up, and we'll provide some information, but it is an opportunity to bring some of these older structures up to code to make sure they are protected during a, a future flood event. But we'll get more information and bring it back to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one other question, if I may. Thank you. And I think that you just kind of hit something, you hit the nail on the head, is whatever we can do to give people the option to floodproof versus elevating that structure, however much leniency we can provide in that, I think makes a big difference, because that's what, it took a while, but that's where we ended up getting to, was, was being able to floodproof instead of elevating the structure, and, and I think that creating that flexibility could be beneficial.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item is DDH lead service line funding and water capital appropriation. This item will appear before council on, for action on March 11th. Mr. Tim Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor. This is a, so just kind of to give you a little bit of background, we, a lot of you are aware that we're dealing with lead service lines in the city and identifying those lead service lines through an inventory, and this is a result of EPA actions, the lead and copper rule revisions, which was promulgated under the first Trump administration, and lead and copper rule improvements under the Biden administration. And basically, what we have to do is identify all lead service lines in the city, or galvanize lines that need to be replaced, and then replace them by 2037. We have an opportunity for funding associated with this. We received an offer from the Virginia Department of Health for a little over 10 million We received an offer from the Virginia Department of Health for a little over $10 million, and that's a loan from the Virginia Department of Health. A portion of that is principal forgiveness, so there will be two actions actually proposed at the March 11th council meeting. A public hearing for the appropriation of the $10 million, and then a public hearing for the funding of the, to accept the funding from the Virginia Department of Health. Next slide. So just a little bit of what we've been doing, we created their initial lead service line inventory on, and published it on October 16th, 2024. You saw the previous slide had all the dots on the screen. Each property on this, in the city that has a service line has a dot, and that dot denotes what's, what the service material is on the public side and the private side. And then we have to send out, we had to send out notices to all the property owners to letting them know what we found by November 15th. We have to do that every year, July 1st, every year thereafter. And then anytime a property changes ownership, or renters change, we have to notify those as well. So that's about 20-some thousand letters a year that has to go out. We have to develop a replacement plan by 2027, because based upon the regulation, any services that are not identified by that time, we have to assume they're lead and plan on replacing those services. So we want to make sure that we are only developing a plan to replace the lead service lines or the galvanized lines. So our goal is to, again, to be in compliance with the regulations and eliminate lead service lines by 2037. And there's other requirements associated with that as well. Next slide. So just where we are with their inventory, we have about 26,000 total services. We've identified 70 lead service lines so far, 67 city, three on the customer side, 216 galvanized requiring replacement. Those are all on the customer side, and those are lines that were downstream, galvanized lines that were downstream of a lead service line at some point in the past. But the big issue is we have almost 19,000 unknown service line materials in the city, and we have to, those require field investigations. We have developed a self-reporting survey for citizens, which has been successful so far. They can go online, submit information about their service line, and then we can check off what their service line material is once we review that. Next slide. So again, the next phase, identifying the 18,000 unknowns. And again, all unknowns have to be assumed to be lead. Then we develop a replacement plan, so we'll have about 10 years to replace all of these lines, and then start sampling at school and daycare facilities in 2027. Next slide. So the funding request itself, we anticipate our funding needs to be in compliance of over $30 million. We have been offered the $10 million, 6.3 million of that is a low-interest loan from the Virginia Resource Authority, 3.7 million of it is principal forgiveness, essentially a grant. It provides the opportunity to remove both public and private lead service lines and galvanized services. So this can, this money can be used on both the public side and private side to eliminate lead service lines, which is a good thing. If the regulations change and regulatory burden is reduced, we're not obligated to spend the funds. We don't start repaying the funds until they are spent. So that's several years down the road before we spend the $10 million. And it's really the most cost-effective way that we have found to fund this regulatory mandated program. So I think that may be, the last slide on that. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but it'll be a public hearing on March 11th, both of those items.
Any discussion?
Good question. Is that places where lead has been identified on the GS, city GIS mapping system?
They are on, yes. The ones that are known at this, and confirmed, they are on the GS mapping system.
Mr. Farodi?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any more discussion? Thank you, brother Tim.
Thank you. Just one more quick point. We would have normally done this during a regular CIP process, but the health department wanted an answer sooner than that process would allow, so that if we don't accept the funding, they can reappropriate to other localities. So that's why it's going now, not during the CIP process. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, review and approve city council finance committee guidelines. This item will appear before council for action this evening. Mr. Donald Witt.
I would like to motion to temporarily suspend the rules of procedure, to move all agenda items pertaining to the finance committee back to the finance committee for further review and discussion, and then immediately reinstate the rules once this motion is adopted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to my motion. So I would like, basically what I said, for us to be able to send all these items back to the finance committee for discussion. And that way, we would have a chance to talk about these things when, again, I'm now on finance, and we've had some more information come back from staff. You know, Mr. Patrick sent an email this week, kind of explaining some things. We've had further information from Dominion, no.
Davenport.
Davenport, sorry. And so, you know, I've spoken to you, I've spoken to Dr. Wilder, so I would like to discuss those things. And also, we never voted to change the time of the finance committee meetings, so I also would like to have our meetings at 3:00 until council can review all of the guidelines as well.
Ms. Bell?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to offer a substitute motion. And that substitute motion will be that we debate this, as is poised on the agenda tonight, and that we address these issues tonight, because we actually have citizens signed up to speak about these very issues. And if we were to remove this item from the agenda, we will be silencing our citizens. So my substitute motion is that we continue and proceed with the debate tonight.
Do I have a motion for second?
Second.
Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I can speak to the motion.
Yes, speak to your motion.
Sure. You know, I think that it's pretty clear that there's an attempt to prevent a vote from this happening tonight. And, you know, I think that that is, it's unfortunate, but what we need to do is we need to, we need to honor our citizens that saw this on the agenda and that signed up to speak tonight on these very matters. And we can hear it out. And, you know, it's premature also to try to just submarine all of these things without hearing from other people that were there. So with that being said, I think it would be beneficial to just have the debate out in the open and see what the recommendation is, see if there's a motion, and move forward. But I don't think that there's anything wrong with having that debate tonight.
Mr. Farodi?
I'm going to clarify, seconded it.
You seconded, okay, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I supported these guidelines. I still support these guidelines. I think they're financially sound. I'd love to have more discussions with staff if there are problems. I'd love to hear from you, Mr. Mayor, if there are specific issues you've got. I'm not on that committee anymore, but I am on the full city council, and I think out of respect for the citizens that are showing up tonight, to try to send this back to the finance committee, when we could just have it and have a discussion in front of them. They're going to be there expecting that, to try to change that now. I think it's a little disingenuous. I think we need to be, to be fair and honest and open with them. This is about being open and transparent, and sending it back to finance is a little less than that. I want to have a good, robust debate about it, and let's do it. And let's talk about the merits of the six guidelines. It's not the end of the world either way. As the way I see it, those guidelines, pretty much you could do anything that those guidelines are specifically saying doing anyway on the finance committee. So it's not opening up a new door or closing a door. It's basically being more specific that these are things that we're specifically interested in as members of the finance committee or as city council. So I would hope that we don't try to shove this back into the dark. Let's keep it in the open, and with the citizens attending tonight being able to participate in this.
Ms. Timmer? Oh, Mr. Farodi first. I'm sorry.
I would turn to our attorney and our clerk. Is anyone being forced off the agenda for the item they wish to speak about tonight?
No, they're still signed up to speak, so they'd be on the agenda.
So they would still be able to speak to what is at current, the recommendation, and if the main motion were to pass, it's still pending, and the committee is going to be reviewing it further. So their comments would still be valid. Is that a fair assessment? I would look to our city attorney on that.
I think that that would be a fair assessment, Councilman Farodi, and council should remember, ultimately, you all do have the final say. So just because it goes back to committee for further consideration doesn't mean that it won't come back to city council. So really, in a way, it gives citizens more of an opportunity to be able to sign up to speak to what's going on if they so chose.
And the finance committee, regardless of when it meets, is accessible to the public, is that correct? So they would be able to witness the committee work?
That's correct.
And then presumably, and I know this is an assumption, but the committee would then make a decision and then send it to council, giving folks another opportunity to speak on the agenda if they so chose.
That's right.
Okay, so now we're actually offering potentially twice the amount of opportunity for folks to engage. I don't think we have the time or the crayons to explain why this is a prudent thing to discuss and adopt the main motion. Thank you.
Point of order. The crayon comment is unnecessary. I wish you would speak to civility on this.
Mr. Mayor, I've been looking to address this. Points of order are supposed to address a specific rule of procedure. If not, they're not valid.
And I am. I'm addressing a specific rule about insults and disorder to the committee. So crayon comment is not acceptable.
Thank you. That's not a point of order.
So, Mr. Mayor, could I offer one comment? So I guess council members remember, points of order aren't necessarily objections, like in a court of law. When you call out a point of order, it should be in reference to a violation of a particular rule. Once the point of order is called, our rules call for the mayor to look to the parliamentarian to be able to give guidance, and then the mayor gives a ultimate ruling on the rule of procedure. And then it can ultimately either be upheld or appealed if council wanted, or a member wanted to see it subject to appeal. So here, it's my understanding that the vice mayor called a point of order presumably based on maybe an insulting comment or something to that effect. For what it's worth, I don't think the comment in and of itself on its face was insulting. You know, I think if there was something more blatant about insulting intelligence or whatever, it sounded to me like Councilmember Farodi was speaking to the simplicity of what he believes something was simple. So that's, that's kind of my thought as to the point of order itself.
So what was your point of order?
I mean, that's, he's correct. It was language that was insulting and demeaning of persons, specifically persons that you serve with on this committee, that was directed at an official or a public employee related to our duties. So we don't need crayons. That's juvenile, that's kindergarten, and referring, using a reference that, it's not even germane to bring up the word crayon. It's frivolous. So that's another point of order, okay? We expect better from each other, and I want to raise the level of civility in this committee. And if we're going to make comments that reference and make people look like they're in kindergarten, I would hope we would keep those out of this chamber.
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the phone.
So do I not get an opportunity to just state my opinion?
Yes, you do, Chris, I'm sorry.
I was speaking to myself, that I don't have the time or the desire to explain my simple stance that no one is being violated with their free speech. They have twice the amount of time to engage the topic, and all meetings are accessible to the public. I was speaking to myself. You may not view it that way.
Do you use crayons?
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilder. A couple things. I'm not necessarily opposed to this going back to the finance committee, but I actually find a lot of value in the discussion tonight, because there's been so much public dialogue around these particular guidelines. And so being able to have that discussion in the open when people are already anticipating that being on the agenda is a valuable thing. And while Mr. Farodi's point is well-taken, that there would be numerous opportunities, schedule changes happen, and when you start to have those schedule changes, we all know that you typically don't show up the second time. So I think there's a lot of value to tonight's discussion, and I'm still reviewing staff recommendations as far as the nature of my particular vote on the matter. Don't have an issue with it going back to finance, but I would encourage the discussion to take place tonight.
Mr. Wilder?
Thank you. I just really echoed what Councilmember Chris was just saying. Again, it's not silencing anyone. They were still, those who are still signed up still have the opportunity to speak tonight, and it does go with the finance committee. Those concerns that they voiced will be heard by this council member, these council members as well. So I don't see a point where everybody's saying we're silencing anyone. They still have the voice, just the voice will still be heard tonight.
They will speak, yeah.
May I clarify one point? I'm sorry, I know everyone needs an opportunity to speak. I want to be conscientious. I'm not saying this is silencing members. I'm saying there's value in having the discussion this evening. So I just wanted to clarify. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wilder.
Mr. Commissioner.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Timmer, for your comments. I appreciate, appreciate those. You know, I think I want to kind of add a little bit on to what Councilmember Timmer mentioned to that effect, and there is value in the debate, because there has been a lot of discussion, public discussion and discourse generated specifically around some of these items, to the point that I met with downtown business owners today, right? There's been this thing that's been floated out there and made up that we're going to defund the Downtown Lynchburg Association, because I talked about nonprofits in the guidelines. And that got adopted. And it's just interesting, because there's no agenda item on there to defund the Downtown Lynchburg Association, but I got a pretty good feeling we're going to have a bunch of people there tonight that are there for a debate about defunding the Downtown Lynchburg Association, right? When that's not even an agenda item. But it speaks to the greater thing about the guidelines, and what these people have planned for and gotten childcare for, and rearranged their schedules to attend, to come speak out on a matter, right? Or to watch what is said, and to see what's said and see what our final decision is. Now, it's interesting, because I was actually talking to Councilmember Timmer earlier today, and due to some of the changes that have come about, I've actually been planning on considering kicking back the guidelines to the finance committee. That's a discussion that Mrs. Timmer and I have had earlier today. However, the financial policies, that's clear cut. Our citizens right now are suffering. And, you know, why do we get to budget differently than they do? Our citizens sit down with their paycheck, and they figure out what they can afford, rent, groceries, kids' needs, before they spend it. Why shouldn't the city do the same? Setting revenues first is how families live within their means, and it's time Lynchburg budgets that same way. It'll also protect our taxpayers when times are tight, right? Everybody's feeling the pinch right now. So what this does is this policy would put our citizens ahead of government, which I think is something that we all feel is imperative. It allows us to look at policy and frame it around economic pressures. So when we feel the economic pressures that our citizens are feeling right now, our policy can reflect that. It's also going to keep essential services safe. You know, one of the things that I've seen floated around is the idea of a funding formula for schools. Well, if we do a funding formula for Lynchburg City Schools, we better do a funding formula for public safety. Because I can tell you, I worked for the city when schools got all the money and public safety got breadcrumbs, right? So it allows us to really look at moving towards priority-based budgeting and away from base budgeting or zero-based budgeting, right? It's also going to stop wasteful spending before it starts. It's also going to stop wasteful spending before it starts. And that would consider that we adopted it and that we had set a rate that was, you know, equalized or lower. And I don't think it's risky. I think it's actually responsible. I read the Davenport memo. The Davenport memo makes a lot of assumptions. It assumes that we're going to spend more than we're bringing in. I know our city manager would never do that. I know our deputy city manager and our CFO would be all over our city manager if he tried to do that. So I'm not concerned about that either. And, you know, if it's something that people are concerned about, it's not necessarily something that we would have to stick with. We could change it next year. So I think that it would benefit us to continue to position this for this evening and have this discussion in front of our constituents, who have specifically taken time out of their schedules to come tonight to speak to this very matter and witness a robust debate on the merits and a decision by this body. Thank you.
I believe we have about two people coming tonight to speak about Finance. And we have no one coming to speak about Downtown Lynchburg Association. Let's have a vote for the substitute motion.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ferraldi?
No.
Councilmember Mishkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Timmer?
I'm so sorry, but I need clarification on which motion we're voting on right now.
This is the substitute motion. This is from Councilmember Mishkins and Vice Mayor Deemer to debate this tonight.
Ah, yes.
Councilwoman Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Motion fails. Four three.
Now, the motion remaining on the table was the one that was made by Councilmember Reed to move all the matters back to Finance Committee that are on the work session and this evening concerning Finance Committee. And I believe she'd also added the until council decides the meeting time to have it at 3:00 P.M.
Which is the current time that is, was the last time we voted for a meeting time.
Mr. Mishkins?
So, you know, a 3:00 P.M. meeting before a 4:00 P.M. work session just simply doesn't cut it, right? Today, we ran the meeting quickly. There was no fluff. There was nothing extra. We didn't even really debate. There was an out-of-order motion that was brought by somebody who wasn't on the prevailing side to try to bring these things back. I have the floor, ma'am. Thank you. So the, there was an out-of-order motion brought. And, you know, just to be clear, the Finance Committee meetings aren't televised. So it's pretty clear that this is an attempt to take this debate outside of the public eye. And this is the stuff people are sick of. It's disgusting, right? To take this debate about how we spend citizens' dollars and send it back into a room, sure it's open to the public. It's just like this right here, right? Just like this, with these chairs. Doesn't get packed out. Not many people are here, right? And it's because government doesn't want citizens to see how they feel about their tax dollars. That's what it comes down to, right? I care about the tax dollars of the citizens I represent. I don't have a problem having a robust debate about spending my citizens' tax dollars. We need to be able to have that out in the open. And I would recommend that we start televising these committee meetings if this is the way it's going to be. Because this is clearly an attempt to try to push this right back into a committee where it's not seen, it's forgotten, all of those things. As far as the time for the committee meeting goes, staff called the meeting. I didn't call the meeting. So I also, yeah, staff called the meeting. I didn't send out any email to call the meeting. We voted as a committee to move it to 11:00. I thought it was going to come to council. Staff called the meeting at 11:00 A.M., not me. I don't have the ability to call the meeting. So that's how that happened.
Wow.
And the agenda today was also said that the next meeting would be at 11:00 A.M. But we went an hour and five minutes, right? So we either have committees where we can hash things out, or we have committees where we can rubber stamp. Keep in mind that these committee changes came last year under then-Mayor Reed and then-Vice Mayor Ferraldi. They changed the times, and they bumped them right up against the work sessions. There's no changes that can be made. There's no, if you've got, if something has to change, comes from the committee that gets changed to the work session, there's no time to change it. So we actually went back to something that was more consistent with the original time so that if there is additional information that needs to be brought back, right? If there are questions in the committee meeting before the work session or the meeting. But we went one hour and five minutes today. One hour and five minutes today. There was no fluff. There was no extra anything. There was really no debate about the out-of-order motion that was made. And doing the committee meetings at 3:00 P.M. simply is not enough time to actually dig through the quarterly reports and talk to the department heads and ask the questions. So do we want rubber stamping committees? Is that what we want? Or do we want to actually be able to debate things on the merits for our citizens? I think that all of our committee meetings should be televised. I think they should all be put out on all the streaming platforms. Enough with this backdoor, behind-the-scenes stuff where we're trying to push this stuff out of the public eye. Thank you.
To Ms. Reed?
I just want it said, for two years, both the PDC and Finance Committees were able to get everything they needed to be done between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. So maybe it's the chair of the committee that can't get it done efficiently.
Sir? Thank you.
Point of order.
Mr.?
Point of order. That was a demeaning and insulting comment from the mayor.
I didn't say a name.
It's pretty clear. Point of order. That was a, she violated the rules of procedure.
I didn't say a name.
And I would appreciate if you keep Councilmember Reed in check for her condescending behavior towards other members of this body. It is not acceptable in this room.
Yeah.
She did it in the Finance Committee meeting. She's doing it again.
Thank you. Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate my points from earlier. I really do not have an issue with this going back to the Finance Committee. And Mr. Mishkins and I spoke about that earlier today and encouraged that. But with that, I really do believe that it is valuable to have this discussion from the dais in the context of council when it's on the agenda. So that's why I'm going to oppose the motion.
We will have.
Well, no, it will be a different discussion, Mr. Mayor. And that's why this is significant. And so that's important to clarify. So that is the sole reason that I am opposing this motion in the work session today.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I seem to recall a lot of complaining and questioning when the Finance Committee came back a little late. But I can tell you that it's not about an efficient chairman, that you don't get the work done from 3:00 or to 4:00, 45:00 or whenever. And that it has come back late once, and today's meeting would have also come back late if it had started at the later hour.
Well, this meeting is coming back late.
Yeah, so it's not just about these people speaking and silencing them. Certainly, they can still speak. It is really about them being able to listen to us, okay? It's not just about speaking. They're here to listen to us, and they need to be able to hear us and understand how we feel about this. And I have opinions, and I want to be able to share them. And it's not just the people that are going to be in the room tonight, Mr. Mayor. It's the people that are planning to tune in. Hundreds, maybe thousands of people planning to tune in because it was on the agenda, you know? I mean, we put it on the agenda. And now we're changing it and putting it back into a back room. And people hate back rooms in politics, in rooms that don't have cameras, in rooms where people can't observe, and where it's not open, and where it's not transparent. That's where good governance just dissipates into the ether. Because we can't see what our representatives are up to. And it's vitally important for them to hear us, not just to be able to speak. Obviously, there are going to be people tonight watching the live video based on what we published. And if we're going to keep our word to them, that this is what we're going to talk about tonight, and all of a sudden we're shoving it back into the smoky back room, I vehemently am opposed to that. We need to be an open and a transparent council. We need to not be rubber stamping committees in 45 minutes or less. We need to have robust debate. We need to discuss these issues. That's why I was elected, and I expect better from our city. And that's what I am here to do. I don't want to shove it back into a back room where there are no cameras and only those in the room know what's going on. Those days should be behind us. I'm certainly done with them.
Are you on camera?
Not concerned about that, Mr. Mayor. But I hope I am, because I think the people in Lynchburg need to know.
This meeting is open?
Good. However, the Finance Committee is not. And 45 minutes is not enough to do anything more than rubber stamp whatever bureaucrats in the administration wants. It is not a chance to have any real debate.
Okay. Mr. Ferrardi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just my comments to you and no one else as to not construe any of my intention or communication. So I'll treat you like, a little bit like a Speaker of the House. Mr. Mayor, if you remember, this council adopted a repeal of a Second Amendment item. We voted to remove the concealed carry permit fee that ran through Finance. And if memory serves, with respect to my colleagues, one of our colleagues, Councilmember Wilder, did vote against it. He expressed his concerns. That's his position. Ran through the Finance Committee. We got out of here on time. Fully debated, fully vetted, fully discussed. We also ran through a number of other items. Not one single meeting, to my recollection, ran late. We got everything done. It was not rubber stamped. And furthermore, it was proposed at 3:00 o'clock because some of us have a job to do throughout the day and need to get here to actually do work throughout the day, and that's why I went to 3:00. So it takes time out of my day, and for the work I do, every hour counts. So it was more accessible for the public than also for those who work. Quite frankly, the insinuation that this is going to be a smoky room, I wish it was, man. If we had a cigar in here, everyone else would be chilling out. They could even probably help. But that's probably not healthy, and now I'm going to get emails about that.
We know what you saw.
But a long story short, Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you exactly why I'm supporting this. I'm supporting this to send it back to Finance so they can further review a memo that came from Davenport and Company that was not provided at the initial Finance Committee meeting. I don't think council's ready to consider the impact of that memo at that time. I'll also forward an email that a former council member sent us, who sat on the Finance Committee for 13 years and not one meeting. And Randy Nelson spoke to this in depth about why this is not a good idea. And I would ask it be included in the record. So now we have two documents, independent of each other, from a reputable accounting firm, Mr. Mayor, and a former council member who was on the Finance Committee for 13 years, saying why this is a silly idea and why I referenced crayons. I ask if we vote on this matter? We will have ample time to debate it. And to the notion that also it'll be a different presentation, I fully expect my colleagues to come up with substitute motions to include what they want in any way. I encourage that we vote.
Motion on the floor.
Councilmember Ferraldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mishkins?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
No.
Councilwoman Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Next item. Votes in commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to get through this in about 10 minutes or less, but the interest of time, I'm happy to also pivot if council would like.
Can we bring this back at a later date, next meeting?
When are the due dates for these again?
March 25th.
March 25th.
March 25th.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I could look at some creative ways of getting this information out to you all and the public ahead of the March 11th meeting as well.
Oh, that'd be great.
Can we have consensus?
That's right. The information would be helpful.
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Mishkins.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Roll call. Any roll call items?
I have one very brief one. I did get a letter from the CEO of the owners of Life Spire, which is now the Summit. I would like it to be shared with council and then potentially slated for a work session. Here's why. They're making a $100 million investment into that corridor, expanding it, more housing, more opportunity. And so I think it's prudent on us to consider the impacts on Timberlake, the portions that we connect to Lakeside, and so on. So it's a huge investment, and I want to make sure that we're considering what they're doing. That's all.
Anyone else roll call? Ms. Timmer?
I just wanted, and I'll follow up with you directly, Matt, but just on the record that I'll be following up with Matt regarding rules and procedural elements and how to introduce some of those changes into the.
Mr. Mishkins?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a report about the status of some specific equipment, and I don't want to mention the company's name because I don't want to say that, I don't want to advertise the company, but stuff related to the fire department, I think you know what I'm talking about. You know, this stuff is reaching end of life cycle. I was actually one of the techs that worked on that stuff when I worked with the fire department. And I've seen the pictures and the reports, and it's bad. So we need to look at options and alternatives to replace this equipment. We need to make sure that our equipment works when it shows up for our citizens when they're having a life-threatening emergency. And we need to, you know, whatever it takes to figure this piece out. I know that there's some desires in the CIP, but we need to look at needs before once, and this is a need. If you've never been there when a stretcher failed with those auto loads, you don't get it. I've been there when the stretcher failed with an auto load that you put in the back of a truck, and it is, I mean, it's going to put our firefighters at risk for injury. It's going to increase workers' comp claims, all kinds of stuff. If that stuff fails and we've got them having to do manual operations with this stuff. So that's one thing. Second is, I had emailed both of you about the issue with the DEA license with the fire department, and I just want to point out that I've not heard anything back yet on that final information.
You emailed it a week ago because I was away. So that would have been a week as of this past Friday. So you will have a response, considering that you sent, now that you've brought it out in roll call.
Sure.
And you copied both the mayor and the vice mayor, we will send the full reply to not just simply you and the two.
Send it to everybody.
We're going to send it to everybody.
Thank you.
So you'll have that tomorrow.